All right, it's one o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. Noting attendance, all board members are present. The next item on our agenda is the agenda review. I will take a motion regarding the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All right.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, I was muted. I meant to suggest, I guess, make a motion that we add an item to the agenda. And that would be to add a discussion about board responses to media inquiries. Probably at the end of the agenda after the action item.
Okay, because the motion, the first motion was moved in seconded first, I'm just gonna open it up for discussion and we can just count Owen's comment there as discussion and we, I think we probably just need to vote through it and if it fails, it fails and then we can start again.
I have one comment real quick, Jennifer.
Yeah.
Due to the emergent nature of this meeting, I'm able to be here. I need to be done by two thirty.
Okay. That is helpful information. Okay, so given that information that we might want to add an agenda item, does anybody have any other further discussion? And I think Owen said that he wants to talk about board responses to media inquiries.
Is that something we could talk about tonight?
It is, and it's actually something that we could also talk about at the end of the meeting if there is time. I know that there are also board members with time crunches at the other end as well. So we, because of the emergent nature, we've got all sorts of people who have made arrangements for work and whatnot. So appreciate everybody who has done that. So, um, well, let's just go ahead and have any more discussion around the agenda. I'm, from what I'm hearing, this was key, you know, it sounds like maybe keeping it as is right now, but then if we have time at the end, we can add that board response to media inquiries. And we can always, we can always add an agenda item at the end of the meeting. That, that's our, we can do that. So, um, any other discussion before I ask Debbie to take the vote?
I guess the only thing I'll add very quickly is I think, oh, and that's a wise idea and one of the downsides of virtual, so sorry, we jumped in there, but yeah, we can add it later.
All right, so it's been moved in seconded that we continue with the agenda as published. We've had discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
Phil.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
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 Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen, favor.
All right, thanks folks. We are now on to number three, discussion items, and three A is the budget analysis. And I just first want to acknowledge that all the work that Kim Dowd has put into helping us figure out where we're at, how we got there and how, you know, what do we need to consider moving forward? And appreciate all the work that she is doing to prioritize that. So thank you, Kim. I'm going to turn it over now to Kim, I believe, who is going to lead us through our budget analysis because we've been getting a lot of help from some outside agencies. And we do appreciate their support and want to hear what they have to say.
Jennifer, I'm actually gonna kick things off here, but we'll be turning it over to Kim and a guest that has been working with us. So Derek, you can go ahead and project the presentation. So I wanted to give a little context to everybody who's watching and on this, that this, this one o'clock meeting had originally been scheduled to discuss the bond. It had been requested by board members to find out how much continuing to pursue the bond would be and for the board to make a decision regarding whether to continue or not. At the close of this presentation, I will be making a strong recommendation that we withdraw the ballot measure and we would need to get that form submitted today. And the reason for that strong recommendation will be shared with you in this presentation. And so I wanted to give a little bit of context to why this meeting is happening in the first place related to the bond. The, and the importance of the budget analysis update for you. And so giving again, a little bit additional context, when we had our last board meeting, Kim walked through where, how our budget expenses were over budget and we were not meeting our budget related to expenses. And so go ahead, next slide, Derek. And so as we left you last week, we were sharing with you some of our next steps and that included a principal work session on last Friday to gather feedback and ideas. And again, the focus of this work was to how do we reduce expenses in this year's budget? And during that meeting, we had identified seventy one thousand dollars in reduced expenses from not filling mid-year resignations or filling them through internal transfers. We'd also identified a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in reduced expenditures, expenses through the delay of purchase of middle school math materials, some reallocation of SIA funds for counselor and music positions that were in existence in the general fund. And so our work there simply was to try to reduce expenses, you know, so that we could try to stay, get closer within our budget and then to identify additional savings that we might anticipate and to again be focusing on that June cash flow that was in the main concern at the time. Next slide. And so I really want to compliment Kim's work here that, you know, upon assuming her interim Director of Finance responsibilities, she reached out to two industry experts there, Jackie Olson and Linda Darling, to do a an analysis of both the expense side and the revenue side. Kim's experience in the district has been on the expense side of things, but not on the revenue side of things. And so it was really important for her to get a grasp on this and to do that, reached out to Jackie and Linda to do a a parent, parallel analysis of, of what we have. On Tuesday night, Kim called me, having received some preliminary information from Jackie and Linda on the revenue side of things that was quite concerning. And so yesterday, we reached out to the Willamette ESD, who's superintendent, along with their two top business officials, drove out here and spent four hours with us reviewing what Jackie and Linda had discovered in their preliminary analysis. We also reached out to the Oregon Department of Education and we had a Zoom meeting with Dr. Williams, the Director of ODE, along with her top two business officials. And so it was, it was quite, we got quite a bit of support yesterday from both ODE and the Willamette ESD, all being provided at no charge to, to really guide our thinking and to corroborate what they were, Jackie and Linda's work. And so at this part, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Kim to introduce Linda.
Yes, thank you, Dan. So joining us today is Linda Darling. She is a Senior Analytics Advisor for Frontline Education. Linda has extensive school finance experience, having served as the Business Director at Lebanon School District for over ten years before becoming a leading advisor for districts throughout the state. Linda has been working parallel with our other partners, including Jackie Olson, State of Oregon Department of Education, our Willamette ESD, and I am so thankful that she's able to join us here today. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Linda for some preliminary information.
Thank you, Kim. Sorry, my allergies are acting up. Nothing like living in the Willamette Valley. I want to really take a moment to ask each one of you, have you ever gone on vacation? You had a budget and you came in to the scent of what you budgeted for your vacation? Anybody? Well, that's kind of like school finance is we can make our best estimates and we can adjust as we go. But there are just some things that are out of our control. And so I'm gonna spend our time really talking about revenues. So I know that Kim had shared with you previously, your beginning fund balance was budgeted at one point five million. It has come in at seven hundred and thirty eight thousand. So let's, I'm gonna round numbers. That's approximately eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars that you're short in revenue right there to start with. There are many circumstances that can impact your beginning fund balance from the moment you develop a budget through, it really is about a fifteen, sixteen month process before you know, sometimes even longer, depending on your audit, what your ending fund balance is. So that's a hard thing to judge sometimes. Also, you budgeted one point two million dollars on your revenue side for Esser dollars. You want to make sure that when you are budgeting revenues, you are budgeting so you can have your maximum expenditure. So if a project in your Esser dollars had not been completed by June thirty, this would have allowed you to complete that project in this fiscal year and have that spending authority. However, the reality is you have less than one hundred thousand dollars left in that fund for this year. So there's a shortfall of one point one million. Then we have high cost disability. High cost disability is a support that the Oregon Department of Education provides for districts. And it's gone on for years and years and years and it's set at, if you have a special ed student that costs you more than thirty thousand dollars to provide education to them, you can apply to have an offset of those additional costs. Currently in our budget, we have one point six million dollars allocated for those additional revenues. However, in the last five years, districts have seen a huge, huge increase in special ed and the cost to providing education for sped students. And so what that has caused is ODE has one pot of money at a set dollar amount. So the more of the hundred and ninety seven districts in the state of Oregon that apply for those funds and have spent those funds, the amount of the being reimbursed is significantly reduced. When I was at Lebanon years ago, I would get ninety to eighty cents on the dollar for reimbursement. We are now down to thirty to forty cents on the dollar for that reimbursement. Our best estimate at this point is that you're going to get approximately a million. So that leaves another six hundred thousand dollars in shortfall. So right there, you can see that you are at over a two million dollar shortfall. Now, that's not all your revenue. So you have some other areas that are exceeding. But I point this out because this is extreme and these are things that aren't there. It's easy to make assumptions and not come back and do consistent, constant evaluation of your revenues. And I applaud Kim because as soon as she realized that things were not off, she did reach out and that we really have been diving into this. I think the other things to point out in this is we cannot give you an exact estimate on your ending fund balance at this point. We have too many moving pieces happening. Some examples might be, do you know exactly what your electric bill is going to be? I don't. I'm, you know, I wait each month and see what that is. I can anticipate what that's going to be and I can work historically. And that's exactly what we're doing is we're looking across all of your expenses, across all funds. We are actively working with Kim and making suggestions on ways potentially that we can create savings. But for you to meet your revenue obligations and to have cash for finishing out this year and getting through the fall of next year, I highly recommend that you consider your next agenda item and approve that for the ten. Is there any questions for me?
I have a question, Linda. Um, I, I'm assuming that, you know, I totally understand your, your analysis about, you know, budgets don't ever turn out exact, right? And I, I guess, one thing that I'm doing is I'm, you know, reflecting on what has got us here is that we were running really thin to begin with. Like, we knew we were running thin to begin with. And so that point that you made about the constant reassessment, that that's the point that we probably needed to do, be more aware of as board members and as a district team. So I'm just checking in to make sure that I'm understanding that. Cause, cause I'm, I'm, this, every budget, every year, probably, you know, you're, you're not exact, right? But it's not, if you've got plenty of reserve, you, you've got a little cushion there, but we, we just simply have, have been running thin and there's, there needed to be more attention paid in this circumstance. I'm assuming that that, that's the situation.
I would agree with you, Jennifer, and I know that with staff turnover and with bringing additional staff in, there's always a lag and there's a learning curve. And I think that's the part that I really commend Kim for is she understands that revenue estimates is not for strong suit and therefore she has brought in additional people to help her with that. I know that as a board member, you might in the future consider having board reports that show revenues and expenses, year-to-date expenses and projections for the remaining of the year. Understanding that this is a projection and things can happen and they will happen. Every month you see those projections, that dollar amount will be different because you're honing in on those pieces. And also realize that when we get to June thirty, that is not your ending fund balance. We are modified accrual, meaning that if we purchase an item in June, but we don't, and we receive it in June, but we don't get the bill till July or August, when we pay that bill, it then comes and make sure that it hits the correct year that we received it in. So there's these offset or delays, I would say, in things hitting your books. So you're always estimating when you're getting those things or when you're paying those things or how much is that going to be? Then you have the challenge of what we, it's called GASB, so general of way.
Account.
Accounting. Thank you very much.
Standard.
And they are, we have new ones every year. And some of those newer ones are, we have to go back after our books are closed and everything is cleaned up and we are working with our auditors to create these journal entries that will then come back and give money back into an expense, but then put that into an unfunded liability. And so you'll see additional movements when that's happening. So you honestly will not know your final ending fund balance, what did we end this current school year in? Until late fall. I mean, I would love to say come June thirty, we have that number, but it won't be. But I think as a board member, I really appreciate the question and I would recommend that the board consider seeing reports in the future or starting now that really do show. And it doesn't have to be down to nitty gritty detail because as a board member, that's why you've had your staff is managing those details. But to give you that information at a high level of what is our budgeted revenue? What have we received so much so far? What do we think is our projections for the remainder of the year? And so what is that shortfall or excess that we have compared to our budget?
Got it. And, and just for full transparency for everybody on the call, that, that is something that I know that I have, I requested back in January. And so then we had some, we had the turnover situation and so kind of lost track. But even before that, I would say that that's something that I wish that I would have asked for on a more regular basis. I think we got caught, caught up in our, our bond effort and kind of lost track of, of that important piece. And so I just want to be really transparent and say, you know, mea culpa. And I wish that we had done things differently, including anything that I could have done differently.
Yeah, I got a question. Given the magnitude here of, of the shortfall, the one point one million in shortfall in the Esser, you know, in terms of the revenues, right? Six hundred thousand in the high cost disability revenue streams. Those are hu, those are, that's a massive magnitude of error, right? I understand things are not always perfect in terms of, you know, that, that we try to be as accurate as possible. But, but I, my mind goes to weird places when I see that kind of magnitude of, of impact. And I mean, how, how could we be that far off? I guess that's where my question is. How could we be that far off in those two segments with the revenue streams? I mean, and, and I don't wanna, I'm not trying to implicate or point fingers here. But I mean, is, I mean, this is almost, is there a negligence here that, that, that went on? Or I, I'm not trying to, again, point fingers or cast blame, but, but the magnitude that we're off here, how could we be that far off? I just, I'm kinda, I'm, I'm, I'm really perplexed by that.
Great question, Erin. So since I have not been at your district, living there day in and day out, it, I can tell you though, as you have staffing turnover, it is easy to lose sight and I mean that very respectfully. So your high cost disability, that is one that we, depending on when your budget was built, is we would legislative session. There is always an opportunity that they put more money into the high cost disability. So if we don't budget for that revenue and you know, that's the part is we want to acknowledge what's the potential. So in that respect, the one point six million dollars is what was submitted on your Oregon Department of Education estimate of membership and revenue. So that's what business directors have to submit. And it's due in January and you're saying, what do you think you're going to get or spend in the next school year? So we've already submitted that for our twenty four, twenty five school year. Now, we do have an opportunity to adjust that and align that. But that was submitted as the high cost disability. And that is the dollar amount that ODE uses because they do two payments for your current, and will be receiving the one point six million dollars that's budgeted here is really for money that you spent last fiscal year. Your district just submitted this month the actuals of what was spent for those special ed kids. Cause books have to be closed, audits have to be complete before that's even submitted. So when we get two payments for high cost disability, we get the initial one based off of what we said we're gonna spend. And it's dependent on all hundred ninety seven districts going in and putting in, what do they think they really are going to spend in high cost disability? And I will tell you that this is an area that is not well reported. And then we get the actuals of what was submitted. So in May, your district will receive a high cost disability and it's made of a two point parts. It will give you your initial payment for your, what you're estimating for this current year. Okay, of what we think we're gonna spend, which is in this instance, one point six million dollars. And you get a reconciled amount for what was, what you spent last year? And how many other districts spent that and how much needs to be reimbursed? And you'll get an adjustment. So last year, you received nine hundred and some thousand for the current estimate, but you had over, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand negative because of how many districts had also submitted this in their reports. That dollar didn't go as far and it had to be reallocated out. So in that respect, Erin, we budget for what we hope. And then we do our best guess. And I have to say, you know, I'm guessing at the million dollars, but looking at history and looking at what's available for ODE, that's, and watching this trend, that's what I really think you're gonna get in. So I guess that's a explanation.
The other piece was Esser too, which was, you said, one point one million short. I mean, to the magnitude, that's even greater than the high cost disability.
Oh, yeah.
How, how can we explain, I don't mean to put you on the spot again, but how do, how do we explain that one's even a higher magnitude, right?
Yes, and that one, I don't have an answer for that one, Erin, and I'll answer to you. I think that when you, your district is in the midst of doing many things and a bond effort, and we did that at Lebanon, takes huge, huge effort by everyone to try to have a successful bond campaign and messaging in all of these pieces. And honestly, I just say it's timing and all the things that were going on in the district. I can't honestly tell you because I wasn't sitting in that seat at that point.
And Erin, Erin, if I could add something there. I think that that was a good part of our conversation with the WESD yesterday in terms of, of trying to dig into those questions. And I haven't worked with Linda on this. I think that Linda and Jackie's work was just trying to, to really understand where we were and not trying to dig into the how or why. Really just trying to provide Kim some more exact numbers to, to kind of grab a hold of, but not trying to go down the road of how or why. But that was definitely, excuse me, a conversation that we had with the WSD folks. And we'll probably be partnering with them to dig into more of the how and why. Those numbers are, are what they are, were what they were.
I see Phil and Derek with hands raised. Derek's been raised for a while. Derek, go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I've got this correct. So by the best estimate, you mentioned probably approximately a two million dollar shortfall. Is that including the estimate that we had at the last board meeting where we're looking at an eight hundred twenty five thousand dollar shortfall? Or is this an addition to it? So are we looking at two million total or closer to three?
So I'd like to actually jump in on that one. So I, I want to clarify some of these values that you're hearing. These are very specific to specific portions of the revenue that were budgeted. So when we talk about a high cost disability grant revenue, we had a, the one point six million dollars was part of the fifty three million dollars that is budgeted in revenue. So we have all of these puzzle pieces that are coming together as far as revenue and as far as expenditures. The high cost disability is one puzzle piece. Federal revenues, which was what the Esser three funds that Linda was, was referring to, that is a grouping. It's a federal revenue sources. That is another puzzle piece. Yes, those two examples. Yes, those two examples, as well as the ending fund balance or beginning fund balance, of course, as we talked about. Prior year ending fund balance obviously always is exactly your beginning fund balance for the next year. That was our first hit. That seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar revenue hit had already been factored in. When the previous uh deficit was shared. We are finding additional revenue deficits. That are further adding to our concern. But to be absolutely clear, we are identifying additional revenue uh excess in other places. So as Linda said, we do not have a number for you yet. We are not talking that it is, you know, any specific number. What we wanted to do is start providing you with the concern that overall. We do not expect revenues to come in at fifty three million as stated for the general fund only. Again, clarifying, we are talking about general fund only here today. Our grant funds are completely separate buckets, if you will. Our student accounts are unaffected by any of this. Our student agency accounts for for the students fundraiser, those are unaffected by this. This is a general fund analysis. Um, now the general fund is can be impacted by another bucket. Such as all of you are very aware that the general fund supports food service. Every year, we must use some of our regular funding, our general funding. To help fill the deficit that the requirement to provide meal service uh provides. That program does not cover all expenses. So the general fund is impacted. By some of those other other grant funds. But I want to be clear, these numbers that are being shared are little pieces. And I will share, there are other pieces that are in the positive. So I really, really caution everyone a about trying to, you know. Put all these pieces together because there are offsets is I guess what I'm trying to say. We don't have those final numbers. But I will say the original estimate that was provided to you for the deficit. Already included the beginning fund balance roughly eight hundred thousand um dollars that that Linda was talking about. That part was already part of our analysis. We knew that piece, right? We knew as soon as that audit was completed in December of twenty twenty three. We found out that our beginning fund balance was cut. So these additional revenue pieces, yes, while they are missing the mark, there are other revenue pieces that are coming in above. Uh, where we anticipated. And those are the fluid and moving pieces that we are working to to analyze so that we can get. Some sort of confidence on these projections for you so that we know what what, as best we can, what we're working with. Does that kind of answer?
Yeah, the the clarification is helpful um. A little bit, and I know that it's a a moving target, so um. I guess the only thought question, and and you probably don't know this at this point, but are those um increases in the other accounts? Are they gonna substantially offset this shortfall? And it may be too early to make that determination, but I think for um this meeting, it's worth asking the question.
For to answer your question, we do not believe those positive um excess revenues. Will, we do not believe they will fully offset these diffi- deficiencies. Um, as the slide on the screen right now shows, um, if confirmed that revenue is is going to be under budget. Obviously, that would exacerbate the previously projected deficit. Um, previous projection was that revenues would be on target short of. I shouldn't say, and I I shouldn't say projections, but the previous information that was provided was based on the beginning fund balance. Uh, deficit that we were aware of. These other deficits and or excess revenues were had not yet been identified.
Thank you, Kim.
Bill?
Uh, yes, uh, two, two basic things. One thing is, uh, it's obvious that this is seeing where we're at. And trying to figure out how we get through it going forward from where we're at. Uh, what I don't want to get lost, and it's been mentioned that, um, I think Aaron mentioned it. We what we don't want to get lost. Is there needs to be accountability, not necessarily here right now. But accountability for how we got here. And because most of these things we've talked about, all districts are dealing with, we're not unique. And so how did we get here in such a precarious spot that we're in? And uh, and make sure that we have things in place. So we minimize the chances of that ever happening again. So that being said, then when it comes to our analysis where we are. I'm a bit concerned here as somebody that's gonna be asked. To make, help be part of seven of us making a decision on a loan. Uh, for a couple, three meetings now, keep hearing. And I I know this is no fault of a person necessarily or anything like that, but we keep hearing. That we don't have a a figure to even throw out there and hang our hat on. As for what our needs are. So how in the heck are we coming up with an amount that we need for a bridge loan? Uh, if we don't have a a handle on that amount that is needed. And so that that's a concern too.
Dan, are you able to address that?
Well, I think in in two parts, we're gonna talk about the tan here in a minute. Kim's gonna address that piece. And then there is a a later slide to to get exactly where I think both Derek and Phil were at. Is trying to, w- we do have to pick a pick an land at a number that we think is our target. As Linda talked about that that these targets are ever moving, but you can't just, you know. Act in this in this cycle of, well, we never will know. So we will land at a target number. Um, Linda and um, uh, uh, Linda's working on trying to finalize, get this to not finalize. But get this to be a a a more solid indicator. Plus, we need to do some work with the W A S D to support Kim and trying to land at that number. Uh, which we hope to do next week, at least to give you an update. And then I think to Aaron's questions, a lot of questions are overlapping here to get a to understand that how and why. So for sure, we have to get to a place where we can have a target number. To start both cutting expenses now and start building next year's budget, which is. A lot of this is covered in a couple more slides and then definitely can continue to a uh answer questions.
I'd like to add to that uh response that absolutely that was my very first question was. At what point, you know, will we be confident in in, you know? Our ability to to, you know, make it through if the tan is is part of the package. So my first question was, you know, do we have a choice on on the tax anticipation? No, and we are, we are jumping, jumping ahead and and I don't know if if possibly um. I I if the board's on favor with it, I'd like to continue the conversation by maybe possibly advancing through our slides.
Let's, uh, Kim, I think, uh, if I see Owen's hand up, I'd like to.
Oh, yes.
Get his question and then, yes, if we could advance to the next slide.
Perfect, perfect, and we definitely will continue. Thank you.
All right, I'd first like to just really express my appreciation to um Linda and everybody that has stepped in and, you know, dropped everything. Without charge and giving us their assistance. Uh, I've been really actually moved by the amount of support that that has been shown. Um, so thank you very much for that. Um, I think it's important to remember that we've got both a revenue shortage problem, but we also have an over expenditure problem as well. Um, that that we'll need to, you know, hear the whole package together to really understand where our our deficit and our needs needs are. But I'm wondering, Linda, um, obviously you're still working this through. I'm wondering if you have an idea as far as an expected timeline and expectation, what that work product might look like.
No, I can tell you, um, Owen, thank you for that. I have to tell you that um, all of us working on this project have been. In school business before and we value the work that's done for kids. We understand that the finances are a piece of that, but our focus really is on kids. And so that's why we're here supporting the district is because we want to support their kids. And um. For a timeline, uh, we continue, uh, Kim and I worked together for three hours this morning. Really going through things when you start looking things line by line and what contracts out there and what do we owe on it in those spaces, it takes time. And the other parts of that is um. We were waiting on some revenue things that just posted as in Tuesday from the Oregon Department of Education. So that was a big timing because that's three fourths of your funding for your general fund. Um, I think that probably by your your. April board meeting, we will have a broad stroke of what that really looks like. Knowing, and I want you all to understand. It will move because as Kim and I have been working on, she gave me a call last night at way too late. Uh, but not for me, but that she was still working. Sorry, it was me. I touched my keyboard, it muted me. Um, Kim identified some staff that we could potentially move into grants. And so working through that, Owen, is what we're really trying to do to see how much can we move? From general fund into these brings, still stay compliant with the grant. Cause that's really important, like we don't want to get ourselves in trouble on the grant side either. And so really working through that. And then you have to go in and actually make those moves within your infinite visions, your financial software. And then that means that Jackie and I on our ends, we're using two different processes. Um, I'm using the what used to be called Forecast Five, it's a product you you've had for years. That's who I work for, it's frontline owns up now. So I'm using that product. Jackie is using Excel and Infinite Visions to do hers. We talk daily, in fact, my husband uh wanted to know if I was still married to him or if I was married to Jackie now. I keep talking to her so much, but. It, that's the part is, we're trying to really do these analysis where we're using the same information. We're using different processes so we can catch if one of us make an error. Because we are all human and there's a lot of moving pieces going around here. So our goal is to have that initial for you by your next board meeting, not tonight, not tonight's board meeting. Um, but your April board meeting, so that's our goal.
Well, again, thank you so much.
Mm hmm. Definitely.
And Kim, just before you move on, I just want to make sure that I'm really clear.
Absolutely.
We had our twenty twenty three, twenty four, our beginning fund balance was the one that was um. Oh, we we overestimated by seven hundred sixty thousand. And the reasoning behind that that I have heard in the past, I'm not sure if it if there's more information. Was that, you know, we spent twenty two, twenty three um in bargaining and we weren't quite sure. How the 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 collective bargaining agreement was going to impact um our payroll. Um, and then we had, of course, the new payroll coming out for twenty three, twenty four. And and to me, it seemed like there was some uncertainty in the projections around that. Am I am I correct in that? And is there any more information around that?
We we are still absolutely identifying um all of the moving pieces, but that was one of the pieces, of course. That impacts um the final ending fund balance, you know, all throughout a year, you're you're. You're looking at um your 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 movement, um, you know, under. You know, best situation and and you're 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 making those adjustments. But when when a contract is settled in late April, the actual retro pay is issued on May twenty fifth of twenty twenty three. And, you know, your budget timing, you don't have a choice. The state of Oregon, you know, says, you know, you you have to build a budget whether you know how much money you have or not. So yes, there are assumptions made in budgets based on the best information available at that time. And it the the budget for twenty three, twenty four was built at that time with the assumption at that time. Um, apparently, you know, what it was made, that there would be one point five million dollar ending fund balance. When twenty two, twenty three came to a close, again, that's after all the accruals. You know, the last money, if you will, the cash that goes, the the expenses that go out the door. For our twenty two, twenty three school year that officially ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. Money is still going out the door in September of twenty twenty three. That will reduce that June thirtieth ending fund balance that passed months ago. And that is the complexity of these modified accrual accounting um structures. Gatsby also was a huge piece. Uh, many of you have brought up the the list of um software subscriptions that are now required to be put into your audit. That number alone was uh, you know, a big impact because of how it is required to be reflected. On your books as an expense and then an unfunded liability. So it's, yeah, it's a uh, it's a complex moving piece up until literally December when we got. Our audit back.
So. Okay, Kim, um, appreciate that. And me just thinking through my head, um, you know, regrets around. The running so thin again, and then, you know, that we we just, i- if we're running thin, we have to. We we needed, I needed, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, I needed to be paying more attention in that in that situation.
I I will, I will state that, you know, in sitting down and and reviewing this at, you know, it it from a different seat. Um, you know, the the ending fund balance charts. Um, the writing, unfortunately, um, the concern has been there. Um, we've we've heard that concern over and over, these ending fund balances, these ending fund balances. And so this, this is, I do, you know, um. I do believe um, that is the issue when when you're running thin. And and things, things don't come in as those assumptions that are made with the best information available at that time. But at the begin, at the end, they are assumptions. Uh, projections are fully made on assumptions and best information available at that time, so.
Thanks, Kim. Josh?
Yeah, so it's this high cost special services. Uh, thing that I got a question about. If if we know we're only getting thirty to forty cents to the dollar. And we know that for, we've been seeing this trend. Am I to understand that we're losing money? Pretty hand over fist, I can't imagine that that's only our district, if that's a shared pot of money. Um, so it's questions like this that when we're trying to budget going forward and we're talking about. Obviously, this program is highly valuable, needs to stay. But is the state not gonna backfill some of our issues here? With these high cost special services? Are we out on our own on this? And and Linda, I'm so grateful for you and thank you so much for helping us out and helping Kim out. And thank you so much, Kim, for working overtime on this. And um, but I don't really know how to move forward if we're on our own or the state. Is gonna realize that, hey, they might have some spending shortages on their side and they're gonna backfill us somehow.
So I can, I could speak to that, Josh, actually, it was on a a very, very highly attended and highly um emotional um. Uh, webcast with the Oregon Department of Education that focused on this high cost disability grant. And again, as Linda said, this this grant or reimbursement program is the best way to call it. Is a fixed pot of money that the state is authorized to use to reimburse districts. For the amount per special services student that exceeds thirty thousand dollars for that one student. So for every student, we track the cost for that student. For every dollar above thirty thousand dollars that we spend on that one student. For every dollar above thirty thousand dollars that we spend on that one student, we can include in this report. Those dollars are then reported by every district. And that fixed pot then says, okay, we had X. And I apologize, I believe it's still at thirty million. I, I may be misquoting, but let's say it's a thirty million dollar pot. The more and more our costs increase to serve students, the more and more students exceed thirty thousand dollars, the thirty thousand dollar, um, per student amount. Uh, so the more and more districts are claiming there's peace of this pot. So that is how they say, okay, we got X number of dollars requested to be reimbursed. We're gonna reimburse proportionately. So now you are down to the forty cents on the dollar or potentially less, uh, was, was what that said. So the legislation and the, the, uh, movement is out there to increase the fixed pot. Correct? We need to increase that fixed pot because more and more students are exceeding thirty thousand dollars per student. More and more students are exceeding fifty thousand per student, seventy thousand per student. It is, it is, um, definitely a, a larger concern, um, from a, from a service level standpoint. Yes.
And Kim, I think I would interject with that is it's an ORS. So it, it takes law to change that dollar amount is my understanding and it is fifty-five million dollars it plays in that. So it's a chunk of money already going in that pot. So I believe that it is outside of OD's hands, even how much exactly goes in that pot to be dispersed. Legislation session is coming up next year.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you. Yes.
I, I had a quick question on this amount that we put in pot. So, uh, just throwing a number saying that we're gonna get got thirty-five cents on the dollar or whatever the heck it was. So am I correct? Or how do we budget? So when we're saying our revenue, we didn't get what we anticipated. What did we budget? Did we budget for, I'm, I'm just throwing a number. We threw, had a hundred thousand there. Did we budget a hundred thousand as revenue coming in, even though we knew we'd only getting, you know, less than that? Or did we adjust our number? I'm not clear on that. That's not making sense to me totally.
So the budget document itself included one point six million dollar of reimbursement. Um, I would need to pull the actual report to see how much our actual cost submitted.
Okay.
The total cost. I, um, I would need to pull that, but, but we have not been at a one hundred percent, um, reimbursement rate for quite some time. So if, you know, certainly, certainly believe that that adjustment was made. The question again is, are you gonna get sixty cents on the dollar or forty cents on the dollar?
Yeah.
That, that can be a big swing if you're submitting, you know, a four billion dollar bill.
In fact, how close we were to what we
Yep.
figured on getting and what the actual number came. That's what I'm looking for. So.
One hundred percent. And we, we are committed to continuing to identify where we can learn. Right now, the critical, critical piece is the forecasting. Where are we and how do we protect our students and, and our staff? And I, I, I hear you. I, I, uh, one hundred percent commit that that, that will be, you know, everything will be turned over, but I, we do have to prioritize right now.
But by the same token, we're within weeks of planning the next budget. And so.
That, you're right on to our next slide. So if there, if there's no other questions, I think it would be prudent to continue on so that we can, we can address. Those are exactly where we're going here. So I want to thank Linda so much. Um, the value of the partnerships, you know, throughout our network in public school finance. It's unlike anything I ever experienced in the private, private sector. In the accounting world, we were all, you know, butt in heads against each other and who can file more tax returns and get more payroll clients and that kind of stuff. The, the network of people reaching out, even just with the support of, hey, been there, you know, hang in there, you know, the, when it feels like the whole world hates you, you know, just hang in there. So, um, I just, Linda, thank you so much. And, uh, Jackie Olson as well, Lamad SD, Oregon Department of Education. Uh, my, my peers from, uh, OASBO, everybody has just been great. So if we can go to the next slide, you know, I wanted to just share with you as we continue to analyze our financial position, the necessity of this tax anticipation note, known as the TAN, has become even more critical. So I'm just gonna take a few minutes to go through this analysis that we received from Piper Sandler. You know, the TAM note can be issued in an amount up to a maximum of three point three six million dollars. So the amount of the note can be determined by us. However, Piper Sandler and their analysis team, you know, they, they build these based on, on what may end up being the most financially prudent for a district. Um, so based on this maximum, uh, note amount, uh, the note would provide the funds in early June twenty-twenty-four and the note would mature in December of twenty-twenty-four, meaning that entire amount would be repaid in full at that time. Uh, the, uh, borrowing rate for this TAM is estimated to be three point seven five percent. That would be the interest rate we would pay on the loan, the note. And at this rate, the estimated interest expense would be approximately seventy-three thousand five hundred. This rate of three point seven five percent does include a one half of one percent cushion to allow, uh, you know, some, some range for what interest rates could do between now and the time that the note is issued. Um, the interest rate at the time of issuance is fixed for the duration of the six month TAM. But again, that rate would not be finalized until that TAM is issued. That is just the, you know, obviously you're, you're issuing that on a market. And so while we are, we are in need of the TAM to support our cash flow deficits, uh, for a period of time. While these funds are not supporting those cash flow deficits, they will earn the district additional interest revenues. And based on the current Oregon short-term fund rate, this analysis, uh, concluded that, uh, we could earn interest in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars, exceeding the cost if the interest of the TAM. This is where you've heard in past, uh, conversations we've shared with you. There are times where districts have taken out a tax anticipation note purely as an investment vehicle. Now, based on this analysis, based on projections of what interest rates could potentially do between now and June, when the note is issued, and then from June through December, while those funds could be invested, we do anticipate that after paying issuance costs, which are, are estimated to be approximately sixty-six thousand dollars, there would, could, would, could be an, a potential net cost to the district of around forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, again, all of these figures are estimates. Rates will, uh, possibly will change, be higher or lower depending upon the prevailing market. Uh, market rates, of course, are not unfortunately something that we can control. However, Piper Sandler, this is their work. Again, there is already a one half of one percent cushion built into that borrowing rate. We did not, um, uh, that way, you know, if we can borrow at three point two five percent instead, we will be in a, in a much better, you know, situation. If by some chance the borrowing rate market goes, you know, haywire and a borrowing rate ends up being four percent, we could see a net cost, you know, uh, of, you know, a, a slightly higher amount. Um, but, uh, this, this is the analysis based on, uh, the information available at this time from absolute experts in our field. Um, there, as we said, there's a, additional districts, uh, uh, going through this as well right now. So um, I'd like to open it up to, to the questions. I think Owen was waiting first.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify then the way that the earnings investment uh, or the interest earnings would be handled, that essentially the entire amount of the TAM then would be placed into our uh, short-term fund or savings fund out of our July school fund payment?
Correct, correct. So the, the, the TAM would, would cover the, the cash flow shortage. Um, and then literally would be able, those funds would be able to sit invested, um, uh, and, and earn interest for the district. As you see, um, interest earnings are projected to, uh, you know, exceed the interest expense. Again, projections, assumptions based on the best information available at this time.
So my follow-up question to that then is, are we confident? And maybe, maybe we are, but maybe as you've previously said, the numbers are still in doubt as far as the deficit for our cash flow crisis that, that our school fund payment will be sufficient to cover our other obligations as well as the full amount that's been borrowed?
So as, as we were, um, uh, yes, uh, uh, the amount that is borrowed, of course, must be paid back in full in December of twenty-twenty-four. So again, this is such a complex web that building the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five will be contingent upon this amount being an expense in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This amount would show as revenue in the twenty-three, twenty-four current year. Okay. So this would come in as revenue in the current year.
I guess what I'm looking, looking at is the, the cash crunch or the cash flow crisis and using this as a bridge that we will, in fact, based on our current projections and what we know, we will, in fact, be able to um, put the entire amount of the TAM directly in, in July into that savings account through the duration until we have to pay it off.
So, so that is, that actually was an email that I sent to, um, I reached out to Piper Sandler about that. Um, that what could the potential interest earnings, uh, adjustment be? Let's say that the entire amount's not back in there until July thirty-first, you know? If, if we're saying ninety-seven thousand over the course of six months, if it's one month later, is it, to me, I am not an actuary, we'll put that right out there. But to me, that would mean that is where you could have a potential adjustment in those earnings, correct? I mean, if you don't have as much in savings for as, as long as your original cash flow projection, and again, these cash flow projections were, um, were, were created before our staffing change here. Um, if that cash flow projection is changing, then to me, your estimated interest earnings obviously could be impacted. I mean, that, that's at the very basic level, but I would think you invest money for shorter period of time. You're potentially not gonna make as much. Um, unfortunately, I do not have the information back from that team yet. Um, that is definitely something that, that I do believe could be impacted. Let's say that the entire amount is not back in the bank until Jul-, uh, August fifteenth payment comes in. To me, one sixth of that interest potentially could be impacted, correct? I, I, that's at, at a very rough level, could fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand dollars of that uh, estimated interest potentially not materialize if it is not fully three point three six million dollars back in its special little pot right away?
Thank you.
I don't anticipate that being an issue in July, you know, I, I I fully, fully believe based on my own review of where we are in this analysis, that that July state school fund payment is going to, uh, be sufficient to put us in the black. Again, we are dealing with moving pieces. So I, I, I'm just, uh, giving you the best information, you know, available right now. I apologize, I wasn't tracking Aaron, I think.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Kim. I, um, I, I, uh, I wanna, I do wanna start out by personally thanking you for all your hard work. Um, you, you stepping into this position is hard enough in a normative situation. And, um, to, 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 to the work you've done, albeit under very hard circumstances, um, you performed, uh, amazing. So I just wanted to put it out there and say thank you to, for all the, the extra hard work that you've done, um, to help get us to, to where we're really getting some of these hard numbers and tackling this problem head on. So I, I again, wanna, just wanna first and say thank you to you. Um, the, we, we talked at our last meeting about the TAM and I shared my, my hesitation towards, you know, approving this TAM in, and I'd like to have seen more of the, like, we talked about some of the belt strap tightening, so to speak, and, and, uh, you know, how can we cut some things and can we look at other ways, you know, including furloughs, including, you know, headcount replacement immediately, like turning every rock, turning every leaf over, right? So we don't have to do this TAM. And maybe we can, and, and we can get through to July, right? That was the last big discussion we had. Now with this revenue projection shortage. Our, and, and please, I apologize, I don't want to put you on the spot too hard, but are we at a point now where that, those type of interventions immediately would not suffice us to get us through into July and to be feasible for our district from a financial standpoint? Are we just past that point now?
We are, because of the potential severity being more than originally projected, right? Um, the number originally projected, I do anticipate is going to be worse. And that is why we are sharing this with you now is that that original projection was based on, um, most other revenues hitting the mark, except that beginning fund balance. Again, that had already been captured. Um, the impact to safely, um, get finances at a point that we could not essentially, you know, be in a much worse crisis. The impact on students would be absolutely beyond un- unbelievable. Um, I don't believe that we have, we do not have any other option right now besides this tax anticipation note. But to be clear, this tax anticipation note is not the only action that needs to take place.
Okay.
We cannot, we cannot right this ship without additional actions.
If I could add, can I add to that, Aaron?
Yeah, sure.
So I think the, the two mechanisms that you have to, to address this are, are layoffs or, or what's called a reduction in force. And people talk about furloughs. So reduction in force, we can, we can implement because we have contract language that outlines that process. And so we can implement that. Um, obviously, we always want to be working with our associations for that, but furloughs typically happen to avoid a reduction in force. We can't just automatically implement a furlough. Um, um, we don't have a contract language that says we automatically can do those things. And so typically furloughs happen. Um, and we are early in the conversations with our associations about that, but furloughs typically happen because associations want to partner to protect jobs. And so that's how those, those things typically work. So to, to, you know, those mechanisms that we've been discussing in terms of, in lieu of a TAM, um, you know, I think again, goes back to a timing issue about how do we use those mechanisms in the time that we have left before a TAM note would have to be submitted? So, um, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And then the, just the other kind of additional, it, 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 and again, I think you've answered my question. We're at a point where this is, this is a, this is a massive reality and a necessity at this point, if I dare use that word. Would that set us up in a place also towards the fall? Uh, to keep us in a steady cash flow space so we can make payroll and everything can go on and, and have the least amount of effect to our students?
Yes, it will set us up to the fall, uh, to have our cash flow under control, but there is no question that our budget is going to need to be very, very tightly, tightly built and it will have to, we will have to stick to that budget. Um, clearly, there is, we have no Um, clearly, there is, we have no choice. That is clearly why we're having these discussions. Is a budget needs to be built and it needs to be constantly analyzed. And if, if we, whatever point we're at, if there is a shift, which there always is, right? We have to shift with it. We cannot build a budget and say, great, we got it done and we're gonna let it sit and do its work. We need to adapt, just as our, our staff are adapting to, you know, our student needs. We need to, you know, and, and we all adapt to when the price of a gallon of gas goes up, you're kinda like, well, you know what? Yeah, it used to be a couple hundred, you know, two hundred bucks a month for gas, cut it, but you know what? I have no control over the price of gas and I have to find now a way to make that three hundred dollars a month for gas work. We don't have a choice. That is the way we live, you know, live our lives is very much the, the appropriate way. That, that we need to, um, you know, attack this. So to, to be clear. We can resolve our issues for twenty four, twenty five. I have no concern about that. But it will take a very difficult budget building process. Um, it will take reductions in our budget. And we will have to find a way to rightsize ourselves for the resources we have available.
Thank you, Kim. Thanks, Dan.
Eric?
Yeah, um, just very quickly echo a little bit of what Aaron said, just appreciate you, Kim. I know you're in a, in a tough spot, so appreciate the professionalism that you've. Taken this head on. Um, looking at this, you've got the maximum, uh, note that, that can be borrowed and is your suggestion that that is what we borrow?
My suggestion would be that we borrow the maximum, not only, um, from a. A risk management standpoint, I have no reason to believe that we need that amount of funding. However, uh, costs are not significantly impacted by a reduction in that. What would be impacted is the potential earnings uh variance. Um, so obviously, you know, if the more that sits in the bank, the better your compounding interest is. Um, so from, you know, my, my analysis as well as discussions with our partners. It would be my suggestion that we sell the, or that we, that we, uh, uh, you know, issue, issue the note at the maximum borrowing amount.
Okay, and then just kind of a follow up question and, and comment, um. I think, uh, in, in many conversations since our last board meeting, uh, spoke to, you know, many folks in our community who were. Not necessarily in favor of a TAM, um, as opposed to doing some of the things that need to be done now to right size. With some of the things that Aaron was mentioning, so I just wanna, I think for transparency to, for folks to know that, hey, we're, we're thinking about that and considering it. Um, I think the biggest concern that I have is that our estimates, and again, we know that these are estimates and projections and. They're the best information we have, but if they're off and our revenues come in short in the fall. Are we kind of just pushing the problem to be addressed at a later date? Um, but as you've explained, and if I'm accurate. There is no other measures that we can take that don't include this, that would allow us to meet budget other than. Some serious, um, like looking at layoffs or early school closure or things of that nature, is that a fair assessment?
I, yeah, I would defer to the rest of the team, but it would be that level of absolute drastic, um, impact and, and. Um, that is where these tax anticipation notes are, um, that's why this program has existed for as long as it has. Um, is, is to, uh, provide that opportunity to not shut down. Schools early, as you mentioned, or not, you know, to potentially have rifts be as widespread, um. So, you know, I, I fully believe, um, that the tax anticipation note is an absolute. And I will use the word necessity for us right now, but as you mentioned, let's say our projections don't make the mark next year. As I'm explaining, that if those projections aren't making the mark as we move on. Then our expenses are getting changed right then. Right? If revenues don't come in as projected, we need to change our expenses right then, right there. So that is the new norm is we have to align actively. Revenues to expenses. It can't be a, a, a backward looking. The importance of forecasting. Has never been more clear, and this is exactly what, um, what needs to happen is our forecasts. Have to be scrubbed. They have to be constantly molded, adapted. When I see something come through and, oh, I didn't have that four thousand two hundred dollars anywhere on the radar. Go change everything going forward. Are we still okay within that, within that allocation? Um, those are the, the constant, um, we'll call it massaging that's going to need to take place. Um, moving forward.
Hey, guys, I, I really apologize, but I gotta let you know that I've got fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
And I've got patients I gotta get to, they're waiting in my front office, and I know we have a bond discussion to get to. And I may not be here for it.
Kim, the, uh, just so I understand, first of all, thank you for. I know you're the messenger and been dealt a hand that you didn't count on, and so I, I like everybody, appreciate everything you're doing. Uh, just so I'm clear, this, uh, TAM amount would be considered a revenue. In the current fiscal year would be considered an expense in the upcoming fiscal year, is that correct?
That is my understanding. I'm not sure if Linda's still on here, but that is exactly my understanding.
Okay, so if that be the case, basically then, that means. That we have to for sure, that much minimum has to be cut out of the next year's budget. As far as other expenses to cover it.
That is a correct statement as an expense, but of course, you know, this, uh, ta- this revenue coming in. Will impact the ending fund balance that would exist had it not been for that revenue. So I, I wanna be clear that it's not an additional.
Yeah, but it's sounding like a good chunk of it's gonna get chewed up, probably, so. Or at least half of it, so, okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, I wanna do just a, a quick process check right now because we do have the situation with, uh, we cannot put off the, the bond. Um, discussion, um, I, I also want to respect that we've got Linda still on the line. Um, Dan, do you have a recommendation for us?
Yeah, I think I can cover the next slide really quickly, and then the la- there's two more slides. There's one quick slide, and then I think we'll get to the last slide. So just, it is really just a recap and a step forward, so we've already thoroughly gone over the tax anticipation note. And just so you know, I, I wanna reiterate, because I heard everybody's concerns throughout the multiple board meeting, or at least the two board meetings where we discussed the TAM. That we, we were working towards trying to hit that mark without doing it. I think if you heard Kim in both situations, especially last Mondays, it really was about the, what else is out there or the unanticipated. And that was really the basis of it. It wasn't to that we weren't willing to or didn't think we could get to the eight hundred thousand dollars. So I think you're seeing at least Kim's forethought around, we have to get a grip on this, and so I think that, um. Again, kudos to her for, for that foresight and getting others involved. And again, you're, you're going to continue to get, uh, updates on the ongoing analysis and forecasting that, um. That Linda is doing, and so that's, that's on our action plan. As we discussed earlier, we must, uh, get the most immediate action item is determining that target reduction amount for this. This year's, uh, budget. We have to figure out how we can reduce expenses in the twenty three, twenty four. Um, school year, and so that has to be, uh, determined even before the April eighth board meeting. That will give you kind of a, a more complete analysis, but we cannot wait that long, and so that is a top priority for our team. To determine what we're going to make some decisions on. Um, and we will update you as soon as we feel like we've, we've found that number. And then, Kim, lastly, if you could just touch on, um, that budget development, um, and schedule, and then we'll, we'll get to the bond.
Perfect, and I will just state that we, we're providing this as the action plan because the development of that twenty four, twenty five budget. As well as the budget committee meetings, the adoption of that budget, all of that has to take place by June thirtieth, no matter where we are. So that is why we're saying quickly, we need to determine our target reduction for twenty two. Twenty three, twenty four, so that we can come up with an estimated ending fund balance of twenty three, twenty four. Because that's what we have to start at the very, very start to build our twenty four, twenty five. So wanna just give the board a heads up that we may need to be reviewing our, uh, budget committee, midi, meeting schedule. To make sure that we, uh, allow plenty of time because it will definitely be a big haul for our, uh, wonderfully, you know. Uh, willing volunteers this year, so thank you. I'll let, I'll let you jump to your bond.
Thanks, Kim. Really appreciate it.
All right, so the recommendation is to remove the bond measure twenty four dash four nine seven from the May ballot. Due to the district's financial position that may affect the potential borrowing wa- rate. And to restore a community trust, well, community trust must be reestablished before a bond measure should be considered again. That's my recommendation to the school board.
Let's open it up for discussion. Josh, I know that you, um, are time pressed. You wanna start?
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, this is not an easy decision, um, at all. Being the amount of hours I put into this, and I know a lot of us have too, um. Knowing, unknowing what the future looks like at the district leadership team and, and all the effort that it takes. To run a bond and to do it well. I, I feel like this would be quite a major distraction. Uh, in order to address our major issues and let's get our budget fixed, get our school system stabilized. I do. Like to always give the choice to voters to decide what they want to do, and knowing that it doesn't cost. It will cost us about two, two thousand dollars, I think was the estimated cost or somewhere around there. It leans me to be open to it, but as far as not knowing the team exactly in the next year or so. And who, who can put the energy to do this well, I'm leaning to agree with Dan.
Um, I, I'll just say that, uh, the information that we received today really impacts this discussion. Um, I probably was in favor of keeping the bond on the ballot, um, until. Um, we got today's information and it's, it's very sad to me because I think that is, um, paramount for our district, but. Also, you know, making sure like Josh said, that we're not distracted from, um, our budget issues, so, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Josh.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jennifer, completely, um, and would just add that. I think from the time that we. We've voted to put it on the ballot, um, it's been informative to me to see. You know, Josh's effort to try and get assistance and help in the community. Um, I think, you know, Josh can speak to this, but he's had a very hard time, um, you know, we just don't have the, the. The boots on the ground, the people that are willing to do the work that we did with the last time, and so that, that tells me something too about. You know, what, where the community support is.
Yeah, I would agree, um, you know, to what's been said as well, as much as I would like to. Give it a, a shot to turn over the voters to see their, um, their, uh, opinion on this and, and let them make the decision. I do feel like it would be best for us to focus our resources, our time and our efforts on, you know, reestablishing. Um, a, 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 a fiscal, a financial situation that's feasible and positive. We also have. Uh, uh, you know, our superintendent vacancy, which we need to, uh, map out and gain stability there. And I just think with those, we need to, we need to have full efforts, a hundred percent effort and focus for a bond, uh, uh, bond initiative within our community. Um, but as, yeah, as much as it's disappointing to me, I think given the current situations that have popped up recently, I think. I do think it would be best to, uh, to remove the bond at this point.
Dan, do we have anything on that first bullet there as far as knowledge exactly how. Much or how that'd be affected or anything, or past history or anything to go on there?
Uh, we don't have anything. I know that when we, uh, presented about our Moody's rating, I think, you know, Moody's was looking at, you know. Kind of one issue about expenses and the TAM resolving that and kinda, and continued to give us that rating. But I think this, the, the, the significance of the revenue. Aspect of this, I think, you know, all your questions earlier, uh, you know, I think would cause, um. That borrowing rate to be questioned, you know, moving forward, and that came from Linda, um. As well, and so it's, there's no data to support that, Phil. It came from Linda. But I think that everybody's concerned about how those numbers were off, will prob- would, could definitely jeopardize the borrowing rate.
Yes, and we definitely got a problem with that second bullet and all our steps going forward are very important on that. Yeah, I, uh, there's a part of me that, much as Josh had said, you know, the. Monetary costs are minimal at this point to putting it on there, but I, I worry about other costs. Uh, even though, for example, district personnel can't actively, everybody's affected. People will ask questions and need answers. District staff would have to come up, help us come up with those answers. And it'd be really divided attentions to our other issues, both the finance and. Leadership of our district right now that we've got in front of us, and so I, I, I think I'd have to support. It kills me to say it, because it hasn't changed. We still need a middle school. That's the sad part. Uh, but, uh, I'd have to say that it's probably prudent to take it off.
Yeah, this is a super, uh, challenging decision, uh, kinda to what Phil just mentioned, the, the priority. And the need of the middle school is still there. That hasn't changed. It hasn't gone away. Um, I think when we're making these very tough, critical decisions, um, as new information comes in and changes. We have to ask ourselves like, what is the likelihood of success that the bond would pass? Um, you know, again, it's stuff because it's, it's just a little bit more, but I think with the things that we have going on with. Determining exactly how bad our budget deficit's gonna be, um, we'll have to come up with a selection process for a new superintendent. We have to work through determining how our budget got to where it's at. And to that building of trust and then not necessarily having the infrastructure to carry out and implement a bond. I, I don't think that we could expect a high likelihood of success of it passing on if we were to put it on the ballot. Um, I think we've gotta spend our energy moving forward to stabilizing the district, and then we can. Um, remember that this need is still there, hasn't changed, but, um. For moving forward, I, I, I don't think I could support putting it on the ballot currently.
Tom, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanna say thanks, thanks to, um, um, thanks for these, um, the, the quick. Response to the, um, for Dan and Kim getting all these, these moving parts together and realizing it affects the ballot. And the, uh, and the borrowing rate and, um, getting, uh, Kim's work, getting the, getting all the, the budgetary stuff. Um, things are, um, a picture is developing real, really quick and, and I really, really appreciate the, the work and the way. Especially the way she had assets to reach out, reach out to and gather in some help. So anyway, with all that being said, yeah, we need to. I, we need to pull that off the ballot, um, especially worried about the potential to, to the, to the borrowing rate. Does it probably gonna cost more if, should the bond pass?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get, I'm, I'm trying to get down, so Josh can get back to work.
Yeah, okay, so let's go ahead and take a vote, uh, because the deadline is today and we need to turn this information in. Um, well, no, we need a motion. Can somebody make a motion?
I moved that we remove ballot measure twenty four dash four nine seven from the May ballot.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we remove bond, uh, ballot measure two four dash four nine seven from the May ballot. Debbie, can we vote?
Phil?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Tom? Tom, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. Aaron?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Josh?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes, all in favor?
All right, um.
All right, um, so the question is, I know Josh has to go. Um, the issue for tonight, um, tonight's meeting is that, that I'm only available for an hour tonight, um, because of my, it's parent-teacher conference night. So um, we, that's, we, we, we might want to discuss this idea of, um, you know, how the board's responding to uh, media inquiries now, uh, because I'm not sure that we're gonna have time to do it later, um, or we can do it later, just knowing that I'm not gonna be able to be part of that conversation most likely. So um, I'm open to discussion on whether we wanna add it now or do it later.
You know, my opinion is given that you're chair, Jennifer, uh, and a lot of times could be a potential point, you know, person for our board, I think you should be involved in that discussion.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was, I was gonna suggest as well.
Well, then let's talk about it now, if everybody's okay with that.
Are we good? We don't need a motion then?
Well, it would be great if we had a motion.
I would move that we add an agenda item to today's uh, meeting to discuss the board's response to media inquiries.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add an agenda item about the board's response to media inquiries. Uh, any discussion? I think we just had that discussion, so let's go ahead and vote.
Phil?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Josh?
I think he had to step away.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, Owen, since you brought this one up, you wanna start?
Sure. So I know that the district has been receiving media inquiries, um, you know, solicitations for media inquiries have been posted on social media, and I'm just concerned that the board um, to the extent possible, speak with one voice with the same message that, um, you know, oftentimes these media interviews will get edited and clipped in such a way that, you know, unintended messages might be put out, um, and I just wanna be um, it sure is possible that, that we get the correct message out, accurate messages out. Um, and I think that we have a better opportunity to do that if we, you know, maybe appoint a person specifically on the board to handle those, um, so that, you know, one person is doing that um, intentionally, we're not caught off guard, you know, or potentially decide to route. Uh, another potential would be to decide to route media inquiries uh, through Derek McAlfras. Uh, so those are my, my thoughts.
Um, I did receive um, a message today regarding, um, you know, this idea, and I think for me, I would rather have somebody from the board responding um, instead of Derek, because um, you know, I feel like we have a level of responsibility that, that probably makes um, makes it more appropriate for one of us to, to respond to those. Um, and I will say that I did get a, a question from the statesman yesterday, had a very short period of time in which I could respond. Um, and it was basically a factual um, request, and I just had to make sure my fact was um, in order before I responded, and it was like a one-sentence response, and then also letting the reporter know to, you know, watch today, and um, we've got another, another meeting um, at six o'clock. So that's all that I have fielded at this point. I also wanna make it clear that um, our board policy um, does not automatically say the chair can speak for the board. We do, you know, w- we, we have the ability to appoint anybody um, to um, respond in, in those kinds of, of circumstances.
Uh, I guess personally, I wanna thank, thanks for bringing this up. It's always been something I've thought about, um, as well. I think, um, well-thought-out responses are probably better than off-the-cuff, and so, you know, if we decided that we wanted to um, have these inquiries and directed towards one person, I think that's probably uh, a good idea. Um, I think it would mostly, or should be mostly just clarification on factual information. If they're looking for um, individual opinions, that should be what these public meetings are for. Uh, especially as we kinda worked through these, so um, I would like to see just a, you know, kind of not a clear voice um, based on facts. If there's other questions that pop up, again, this is the forum for people to hear us, um, you know, work through the issues and hear our ideas and thoughts.
I concur on what's been said so far. I think it should be a person from the board and deal with the facts.
I think Owen would do a great job with that.
Well, I, I appreciate that, um, but I was, uh, well, I've been thinking that it might be most appropriate to have, to have Jennifer do that just because she is the board chair. Um, but then also just because of uh, other obligations and things that, that I've been working on, um, too, I'm not sure that I'd be the best person to do it. I mean, I'd be wel- I'd be willing to do it, but, um, anyway, that's.
I do wanna say that Owen spent five hours at the district office yesterday, um, in, in order to kind of oversee um, what was going on, or, or not oversee, but, but just be a presence there, and um, I, I just wanna say I appreciate that, Owen. Way to go.
Yeah. Big time. I, I do think, uh, I, I agree. I think Owen would be a good spokesman. I do think appearance-wise, uh, when you're talking to media and everything, probably has the best look coming from the board chairman, uh, as far as, at the end of the day. But I'm fine either way, so.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think it'd be appropriate, just again, by nature of the position, not that it always has to be per policy, but, but I think just by nature of the position, having our chair so, um, kinda help us speak with that, with that one voice.
I'd be willing to do it, um, and I think that, um, I hear the limitation to facts, and, and um, I will often get, you know, inquiries, and I, that's how I respond, is I, I'm not authorized to speak for the board. Uh, please check the, the meeting, um, and at the same time, you know, it may, yeah, yeah. So anyway, that, that, I, I guess that's my, kind of my default, so I'm happy to continue with that, or um, whatever the board wants to do.
Well, I'll just say too, Jennifer, you demonstrated, um, you know, a really good ability to do that during the last bond with your responses on social media and all that. I thought, I thought that was exemplary.
Thank you.
Um, do we need to make this an action item then, or have a motion or just a discussion and agreement?
It is our, since she is our board chairman, I think almost by default, isn't it kinda considered that way anyway, without a?
I think, I think.
I'm not opposed to a motion, but.
No, and I think that as long, I mean, if, from what I'm hearing, if we're just sticking to facts, I'm, I don't, I'm not, I, not necessarily, I, I, I don't think so. If you, we were going to develop some kind of a, a statement uh, for the public, then I think that there would need to be um, some kind of emotion um, around that, because, um, yeah, I, I just think that that's more appropriate, but for, at least my first thought is that if, if that's the way it's gonna be, that's how, how I've always operated. So um, I can just make sure that I clarify, you know, um, that when, when I give the responses, so I, I'm fine with that. Uh, Owen, did you have anything else in mind besides just factual kinds of responses?
No, I really didn't. I really didn't.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, I was gonna say the only thing that, um, we'll probably wanna make sure is that, um, this gets relayed to Josh by this evening. So that way he knows kind of the direction um, of as far as like yielding any kind of media requests, uh, to chair.
Okay.
Yep, sounds good.
All right, sounds like we are done then. So tonight, we're gonna be meeting at six o'clock in person. Um, I will, most likely will not be there in person. I'll be virtual. I will, um, start the meeting because I have um, been um, communicating with Lisa Fraley, our, our um, W E S D attorney, which is free, by the way, just wanna make that really clear. Um, and so I've got the background knowledge to kind of introduce, but I'm probably gonna have to hand off to Aaron um, at some point during the meeting, so I just wanted to let you all uh, have that heads up.
Okay.
Okay, well, um, without objection, meeting adjourned.